Okay, everybody ready? We have a meeting in order, I should please stand for the pledge of flag. Flag of allegiance.
To the flag, to the United States of America. To the true republic which stands standing. One nation under God, indivisible, with a good future just for all.
Okay, welcome everyone here this evening. Town board's work session, then we do have a special meeting at the end for a couple of items. I'll ask if any public comment on agenda items? Yes?
Good evening, how is everybody? Randy Clark, 28 Main Street. I just wanted to, while I was looking over the items. Number 10, the MS4 change. Based on the documentation presented, I was just wondering why it got to this point in December? Based on the documentation, there was a change order that was written on January 25th this year, in 2021, and that basically changed it from Cornwall to Windsor to just Cornwall. That work order was approved on August 27th, 2021. That work order permit expired last month on November 15th. So why are we discussing an expired permit? Secondly, what benefit is it to the town? New Windsor receives a great benefit. KJ receives a great benefit. Yet isn't the permit hedged on what Cornwall says? So that's my concern is, what's in it for Cornwall? We have a lot of cards to hold in this. We should benefit from this change in some way. Yet according to the documentation, the permit expired November 15th.
Anyone else have a comment? Yes?
Scott Treasi, 22 Cherry Avenue. Regarding number eight, premium pay for essential workers during COVID. So I assume you'll be talking about how that premium pay is going to be allocated, who will be allocated to, and where and from what portion of the budget that premium pay is going to come from?
We will. Anyone else? Okay, hearing no one then. First item on the agenda, we have the preliminary report, Mailer Avenue Traffic Study. I think Rich is here, from Collers Engineering. Yeah, wherever you, just given the board an overview, the board all has copies of the study.
Sure. So just to give you a quick introduction, Rich Dandrea, Collers Engineering Design, professional engineer in State of New York. So as you know, we were tasked with reviewing the speeds along Mailer Avenue. And as a little bit of background, so the New York State Department of Transportation is typically responsible for setting speed limits along the roadway, along any town road. And municipalities basically have the ability to request a reduced speed limit. The reason for that is DOT wants consistency in speed limits and they want to make sure that you're not just arbitrarily setting the speed limit, right? So that was what our task was, to just review those speeds and see how they fit into what DOT's guidelines for reduced speed limit. So we were provided some data from the town for the north end of Mailer Avenue, which we reviewed. We also collected some additional speed data at the southern end of Mailer Avenue ourselves, south of Lee Road. And together with those two pieces of information, we took a look at what the speeds show and the average speed limits along the road were actually closer to 26, 27 miles an hour in both locations that we reviewed. The 85th percentile is what, which is what really is used for setting the speed limits, which is all vehicles that are traveling, 85% of the vehicles are traveling at that speed limit or below, right? So the 85th percentile speed was actually identified to be 36 miles per hour. So higher than the speed, the 30 mile an hour posted speed limit. There's some other things that we also looked at, which would be the 10 mile an hour pace, which is the majority of vehicles are traveling within that 10 miles per hour. When you take all this into account, it doesn't really support a reduced speed limit, okay? So DOT gives you some leeway with those things. We looked at accidents along the roadway. There's no, for the last five years, there's really no significant accident history. We only saw three accidents along the roadway. So that wasn't something that we could really take into account there either. So like I said, there wasn't, there wasn't really anything to justify a reduced speed limit. So then we looked at, what could we actually do to maybe bring speeds down a little bit further? So, you know, driving the road, one thing you notice is the pavement's not in the best condition, a little bumpy. So that in itself, as it is right now, should tend to bring speeds down a little bit. It is a straight run, so I can understand, and there's some hills in there, can understand why you would have, see cars traveling at a higher rate of speed. So some of the other things that we looked at were roadway striping. So right now it's an unstriped roadway. Putting a W yellow center line and white fog lines on either side of the road would, would help. What you could do with that, it's a, I think it's a 20, I forget exactly how we worked this out. I wouldn't say it's a 25 foot roadway, right? So it's, if we go like two 10 foot lanes and whatever is left over would be outside, that is white lines. Those 10 foot lanes would tend to drive speeds down a little bit. That may only work for a timeframe because the pavement width is still there theoretically and people may well get used to that. So that's kind of like your easiest and cheapest option, right? Some other things we looked at were LED radar speed signs. I'm sure you've seen them around somewhere as you're driving. They flash the vehicle's speed as it's passing by the sign. And all that, that in itself tends to make people come down in their speeds. The research on those typically shows that it reduces speeds on average of like 5 miles an hour, anywhere up to like 10 miles an hour, depending on the prevailing speed on the roadway. So those are, those are two relatively easy things to do. Then we looked at some other options, probably not as, as well received sometimes, is consideration of speed humps or speed tables. That would probably give you your greatest reduction in speed. But you're looking at installing probably four speed tables or speed humps along that roadway for the length that it is, probably two to the south of Lee Road and two to the north. And, and there's some other considerations in there. Sometimes they create some roadway noise, so you have residents along that roadway, which would be a consideration. You have to take into account plowing and maintenance, emergency services for response times and things like that. So if you were to consider that, it's something you want to get input from everybody on. And then lastly, and the reason I put this last is, Lee Road basically is the access to the elementary school. So you could consider posting a speed limit, a school speed limit zone on that roadway. It wouldn't cover the whole roadway, it would cover probably, basically 600 feet north and south as above Lee Road would be as far as you could extend it. And you would post it for that roadway, you would post it at 20 miles an hour. And that would definitely help to bring school speeds down there. There's some signage things you can do with that. You could do flashing signs for the school speed limit and things like that. That would help to bring speeds down. The reason that I put that last as my recommendations really is because DOT, in their guidelines, suggests that you try other measures first. And that's where the other three things that I listed would kind of come in. So I mean, that was kind of like the quick overview extent of our study. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. But like I said, in the overall, it doesn't really need the warrants to reduce the speed limit to a little 30 miles an hour that's there.
Go ahead.
Can you tell me the difference between the, a speed table and a speed hump?
Sure. I, in the study, there's attachments in there that show it. But basically, a speed, a speed hump is a rounded sinusoidal kind of setup. It, and a table, where the table is more trapazoid, it, it's like straight up and then flat across the top and straight back, yeah.
Thank you.
And we're not talking about speed bumps, like you're not, you're, they're not abrupt. These are, these are meant to be traveled anywhere between 15 and 25 miles an hour depending on, on design.
How, like how, I don't want to say. I know, how wide would they actually be?
Like long, long ways along the roadway?
Like if you're approaching it?
Yep.
What, how?
From one end to the other.
Yes.
They vary, so it could be anywhere between 14 and like 22 feet depending on, depending on what the design is.
I think you're talking about the, what's the, are you?
No, no.
No, I'm talking about the direction of travel.
Correct.
From when you hit it to when you come off, anywhere between 14 and 22 feet.
Okay.
Yeah. It really, again, it depends, it depends on the design selected and what the goals are, right? The shorter the speed table or speed hump is typically matched with a different, a different height change. And then based on that, you get a different speed reduction typically.
You mentioned we can do something, reduce speed 600 feet either side of Lee Road. We're told that because the school was on Lee Road, that we couldn't do anything with Mailer Avenue in terms of reducing speed.
From what, the way I interpret the guidelines, and we can take another look at this, but the way I interpret the guidelines, it seems like because, to me, you could quantify Lee Road as the access to the school, is the way I interpret it, right? And then, then you could assign the school speed zone on the, on Mailer Avenue because of that.
It's a matter of interpretation.
And that's something we could, you, the school speed limit, speed zone has to go through the DOT also. So we could talk to the state about that and make sure that we're interpreting it the right, correct way.
Anyone else?
When you say like a speed table, like you know how when you're driving down the hill coming into the bare mountain traffic circle right before the bridge? Is that like, you know, you have that pavement that you go over and that's supposed to slow you down? Is that group?
No, that's group, that's different, yeah. That's different.
This is trying to imagine this.
It's a big raised platform because you don't want people to bother up their cars and sue the town.
A lot of times, speed tables are actually used in conjunction with a crosswalk, right? So you'll have like a raised crosswalk situation where the vehicles have to slow down to go over that speed table. It also gives a good place for, for crosswalk. But they, they are more or less interchangeable regardless of location.
And I think that the height of those is like somewhere around three, three and a half inches.
Three to four inches depending on the ultimate design.
All right, board members, any other questions? Anybody else? All right, Rich, I think that's it.
Okay, great.
Thanks very much, we appreciate it. Next item, we have a sorcery settlement for Proter. We had the recommendation from Ira Levy. The board members have copies of it. Reduction in 2020, this is for property, 53 Weeks Avenue, 106-3-25-1. Year 2020, original assessment, 7278.5. Ira's recommending reduction to 216, 216,000 for 62,005 on a reduction, just for the one year. Apparently 2021, it's 278.5 and it will remain at 278.5. Then on the sorcery for Stone Hollow, settlement is laid out there. Small numbers really, original assessment, 39, I think it's on the pump station, which hasn't been turned over yet, 39,564, a thousand dollar assessment reduction in 2016. Ultimately down to original assessment in 2020 was 18,600 with a thousand dollar reduction. So each year a thousand dollar assessment change. So 2020 would reduce it from 18,600, a thousand dollars off, and make it 17,600 based on the assessments. Small numbers. Real Energy, Steve, I know you've been talking to Steve Harriman, I think Louise, about that, about putting together an agreement so that the study can be conducted.
Well, yeah, that's, that's right, Dick. As I'm sure you recall, you got a proposal from Real Term to change out the street light heads. Estimated cost of 311,594 dollars, or if you wanted the smart works on it, would be 336,537 dollars. I had some questions about the contract, as you, for example, wanted to know if their fees were included within the estimate of the 311 to 336,000 dollars. And the answer is yes, that was included within that estimate. I've been talking with Steve Harriman about a number of small changes and clarifications to the contract. Things like there's an arbitration clause which should be removed. There's a mutual indemnification clause, should be unilateral indemnification clause. They've agreed to pretty much everything. They are having their council draft up the revised agreement and with any luck, you should have it Monday night. So if the board's inclined to, of course, have the copies of the agreement before then. The client to act on it, you probably can act on it Monday night, but you're not going to know that until later this week to see if they get back to the turnoff.
Okay. All right, anybody have any questions on that? All right, workers' comp insurance renewal for the town. We've been with Comp Alliance for the past few years. And this year, there was a slight increase, 3.15%. So the proposal for 2022 fiscal year is 287,571 plus the state assessment, New York State assessment, which is 87,88. And they've also offered a, a second year if the board wants to consider it, for the year 2023. Same, 287,571, and they don't know what the state assessment would be for that. But I would recommend that we lock in the two-year rate. We've, we've been pretty successful with the Comp Alliance, we've seen reductions in the rates. And so I would recommend that we consider the two-year. Main Street Parking Study, we were going, putting together an RFP that went out, I think, Steve?
It did. December 13 is when you should get your responses. I've spoken to two traffic engineers, both of whom said they would be submitting proposals. So we're just going to wait and see on that.
Okay. A couple items, actually under the American Rescue Plan, there's a couple things that initially we discussed the possibility of doing. One is to purchase emergency generators for both the pump station and the sewage treatment plant in the Firth Cliff Sewer District. These are on state contract. The pump station's $48,000, includes installing new controls. And the sewer plant is $42,000. And these are state contract. And the, so the total of $90,000 would come from the American Rescue program.
If this was mandated, how would we not currently comply with it? That was my question.
Well, it's, yeah, we have not been ordered to do it. It's something that we've been talking about, trying to get the generators in there. But rather than put it on the district itself, we now have an opportunity to pay for the generators, which the PMO who operates the plants strongly recommends that we do it.
Didn't we say we were going to put together a committee of members of the community to determine how we were going to spend the?
We are. Well, you, you, no, we did talk about that, but these are a couple items that we talked about initially doing without, you know, drilling down further into what are the projects. And while we're on that subject, I think there's been a relaxing of the limitations and restrictions on projects that can be done. So things, from what we're gathering, stormwater drainage plans now can be, can be eligible under the ARPA funds. So the second item is the premium pay for essential workers. This is something that clearly is in the plan and I think well-intentioned to recognize essential workers who worked during the difficult part of the, not that it's not difficult now, but the difficult part of the pandemic. We had in town, well, in town, we had, I think, from roughly mid-March to mid-June, that we really had reduced staff and kept the essential workers going also. And looking at that, I put together a proposal. We've recognized the number of hours that employees worked, actually worked during the, that three-month period. So the criteria that we put together for the COVID premium pay would be for current town employees to recognize work that was done by essential town workers during the period mid-March to mid-June. Essential employees who worked more than 50% of the hours during that period will receive a one-time payment of $1,000 in premium pay. All other essential employees who worked less than 50% of the hours will receive one-time payment of $500 in premium pay, including the part-time employees. And I think the, the total for that, for all the employees comes to $40,500, which would again come out of the American Rescue Plan. And the third item for reimbursement is, it's simple reimbursement for expenses that we accounted for while we bought a lot of hand sanitizer and did a lot of other things. The two big items, we spent $4,800 for the plexiglass dividers in two of the offices. And for many months, we had builders and ground staff coming in on Saturdays and Sundays on overtime to clean the police station and also wipe down playgrounds and so forth. And so the $4,800 plexiglass is $7,420.84 for the hours from building and grounds. So this would basically go to reimburse the, the town from the ARPA fund, the $12,220.84. The MS4 Acceptance Forum, Carrister Oil Water Pipeline Project. The thing that actually held that up was the RMR engineer did review the plans that were submitted over many months. Unfortunately, the DEC, I think, did provide a letter signing off on it. But also, the holdup was actually getting correspondence from the DOT regarding the permit that was issued by them. And that dragged out for months and months and months. DOT was really responsible for the oversight of the project because it was in the state highway, wasn't in the town right of way. So at this point, based on discussions that have taken place with the DEC, the engineer getting the information from the DOT, they, even though it's after the fact, so that the record is clear, they want the town board to accept the MS4.
Yeah, just so we're clear on that, Dick, this isn't really an approval from the town board.
Well, the supervisor is the officer, right? Or the engineer is the officer and the supervisor signs it. So really, the town board does not have to approve this.
Well, no.
Well, I'm saying, yeah, I'm just saying, obviously, we would run by it, but this is, the supervisor is supposed to really.
As far as the signature goes, but my, my point was that what you do is you look at your MS4 plan and you look at their SWIP, their Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. If their Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan comes within the terms and provisions of your MS4 plan, they have to sign off on it. Because if the engineering matches up, you're just saying it's in compliance. It's not like you're approving anything they're doing. You're just saying this matches up with our plan. So we've had our engineer take a look at it.
I just, yeah, I spoke to Sean last week about it. He basically said that there's no reason not to, there you go, to sign it.
So I think, given, given the misrepresentations that were made with the last MS4 certificate, I think it's appropriate for the town board to put a resolution on. Each town board member's had an opportunity to speak to the engineer, review the plans and all. And each board member can vote whether or not they want to approve the MS4 for the supervisor to sign, authorizing the signature. But that'll be on for next week's meeting. Next is a proposed lease for the Mountainville Post Office. The attorney has reviewed the lease. Steve, I think basically we're getting an increase in the, the rent?
Yep, it's a one-year lease. Yeah, the increase in part reflects the costs that go into the post office in securing leases like this. But, you know, that'll be a wash and the town will be better off than it was last year in terms of overall payments.
So we'll have that on the agenda. The agreement between, let's see, the proposed lease, we're not there. The agreement between the town and the Humane Society of Walden for taking the dogs, our police department picked them up, we had dogs turned in and all, so we have that option. That's worked out very well, Chief, correct?
Yeah, it's a substantial savings.
Set in the 2021 reorganization meeting, January Town Board Work Session. Josh, do you have a date and time for the reorg?
Yeah, I was hoping Wednesday, January 5th at 7:00 PM.
Okay, next item is a letter from the attorney regarding the receiver's undertaking. Steve and I just a brief overview, this is an annual thing for 35 years.
That's, that's right. The receiver of taxes is required to post an undertaking for all the money that she receives on taxes, which would be an enormous undertaking if all the tax money was involved. The state will allow you to post an undertaking limited to the amount that you reasonably anticipate being in the receiver of taxes hands at any one time. So we've had that bonding placed for years, we just renewed it. And we sent a letter into the, to county saying that we're not posting for the entire amount of taxes for the town, just for the limited amount that we reasonably anticipate being paid in at any one time. And the county accepts that.
Okay. So we have an agreement, a lease agreement for the county bonding program. And requests from the highway superintendent authorizing the purchase of the new 2022 Chevy Tahoe for the superintendent to place the current truck in the highway department fleet. The vehicle, the highway super is using it now, I think it's probably two years old? Three years old, something like that? And we do have a pickup truck that really needs to be replaced as soon as we get a replacement vehicle. So this will allow the truck to be turned over to the department for use by the staff. Next is to authorize the survey be conducted for the Condon Road Bridge replacement. The engineer needs the areas to be surveyed so that when they design the, the new bridge, they'll know what the confines are of the, the property and have the topography and all involved with that. So we do have a proposal for that. Then there's a draft proposed, tree preservation law for discussion. The board asked the attorney to review the various proposals from various communities and he's put together a draft. And I think it's up for discussion, the board to see exactly how much you want to include in the law. Steve, maybe you can address it since you really dealt with it. And also, the fact that we do have the clearing and grading, which covers a lot of it, we're going to treat.
Sure, I read the memo and looked at the various draft laws that the CCAC sent over. And basically what they say is that they want to have a, they can buy, and these laws have, a provision in them under which any trees that are cut down, with exceptions, dead trees, diseased trees, certain other clearing, would require a permit from a tree officer in the town of Cornwall. There's some other provisions that they discuss, tree committees and things like that. But those really are more appropriate for a village than for a town. So I left them out of the draft. So as I went through drafting the, the local law for the tree preservation law, code amendment, I realized that it overlaps largely with clearing and grading permits that are already in the code. There are some tree removals, firewood and clearing for construction, single-family homes and things like that, depending on the amount that you're clearing, you understand, a lot, that would fall below what's in a clearing and grading permit. And if the board wanted to, you could, I would say, add it to the clearing and grading provision as opposed to making a separate tree preservation law. And you could capture the removal of those trees to regulate it if you wanted to. But you really need to reconcile what you want in clearing and grading and what you want in tree preservation in order to draft this local law. Because to put another one in the books, which just is redundant to some extent, clearing and grading and conflicts with in other respects, the clearing and grading permit doesn't make a lot of sense. I don't think the board's going to be, I mean, it's something of war, of course, but I mean, I don't think the board's going to be in a position to move on this on Monday. What you might want to do is put it off and maybe have a special workshop to discuss it, maybe have some people from the CCAC and, and come up with a direction on this. And then once you know what you want to do, we can put together the, the draft and the board can move forward off that.
Yeah, because I, I mean, as I was looking at like four, like point four with the number of trees in the, in the acres, and I'm not joking like this, I was like, I was getting in the weeds with all of it. And I, I was like, is this where we want to go? Because I think it's going to be very confusing and I just really want to look at these numbers. Because I think it's going to be very confusing and I just really want to look at these numbers because it just seems like really prohibitive. I understand the spirit and why we want to do this. And Steve, I just like point six where they're looking at the slope.
Yes, three.
Yeah, because I look at the map. If you look at the map, the NRI, the maps, I mean, most of Cornwall, like if you really look at the topography, right, the maps, it's either it's between the green and the yellow that's on the map, it's a slope from eight to twenty-five percent. So I can tell you one thing I was going to look at, and I don't know if this is for our engineer to look at, you know, to say for our planning board and our zoning board, is I was looking at maybe twenty-five percent because if you really look at the map, that seems to be like the slope is that's where I think we need to concentrate. So those are just like little things I was looking at and this could be a whole, I mean, really, there's a lot to this.
Yeah, and you're going to get into line drawing exactly like that when you start drafting law, we want to have this as being threshold and not that.
Right.
You know, another issue on it, I didn't get into it too much in my memo, was do you want to have a permit that must be issued by, and I thought the building inspector should be the person to issue it, I don't think you need a separate tree officer.
Right, right.
Do you want to have that it must be issued unless he finds one of these prohibitive things has occurred? Or do you want to have a permit where the applicant has to come in and prove that he's entitled to it? It can only be issued if the applicant shows that meets this criteria. And it makes a big difference when somebody comes in with a permit, other the building inspectors checking boxes, no, it doesn't pass that threshold, it passed that threshold, it doesn't. Or if the applicant has to come in and actually make a showing that, oh, no, these trees are ones that can be removed under the tree work. So there's a lot to talk about there.
Right, now I'll go back to one more point because I tried to find this information on the DEC site. Looking, it says any tree, this is point two, any tree designated by New York State Department of Environmental Conservation as a protected native plant. So when I went to go look at that, I'm seeing plants that are like ground cover, I'm not seeing actual trees, so I'm a little confused.
This shouldn't apply to.
It should, right, it shouldn't apply, so.
Tree cover.
Exactly, okay. So, I'm sorry, it was interesting.
You good?
Thank you.
Yeah, I would say that we need to look at this for a little bit longer and I'd also be interested to hear what maybe some builders and, you know, I hate to say the word developers have to say about it, because we have to strike the right balance with this. So, you know, I don't think it's ready.
Oh, yeah, a special meeting or something like that.
I can see people regre. That's true. I don't know.
Okay, next item is an email received from Monica Cialas. It was signed by Mark Schlock, who's a property owner requesting water service actually add on Palomino Place. It's a parcel land, they're just outside of the water district that includes the part of the town that's covered by the flooded water system. So I referred it to the attorney. Steve, you know, I want to just touch on how.
Sure, this is basically a request for an outside user agreement because she's outside the district. You could go through the exercise of extending the district to, you know, incorporate her property, but it's just one law. In these instances, board usually is willing to give an outside user agreement where, under which the person would agree that in the event they're delinquent, the town can levy the delinquency on their tax bill. Before getting into reviewing and preparing, because you're going to need both legal and engineering on this, you should require, if she's interested going forward, the applicant to submit an escrow to pay the fees of the town.
Next, just a request from the assessor to attend, it's an online class for credits, education credits, it covers real property law and equalization rates, levy, collection taxes and so forth. So it's a hundred dollars. We'll have that on the agenda just for the board to approve that. This year, as in the past few years, the town has had a holiday decorating contest for residential and commercial properties who want to decorate for the holidays. We're going to ask that they submit their interest, the application to their recreation department and then the board members will go out and survey the areas and come up with some of the winners. It's been kind of fun in the past, it's interesting going out and seeing the different displays that are throughout the town. So we're going to do that again this year. Next item, the friendly visitor program. Virginia's been looking into this, so I'll turn it over to Virginia.
I think we've been looking at this since about, I think, 2018.
It goes back initially.
Yeah, 2018, and we've had presentations at the library trying to educate and recruit volunteers. I will tell you, from January first of 2021, there have actually been thirty people within our community, clients, that have been utilizing the services. Volunteers have been trained and I do see this as a growing need for our seniors here in Cornwall, especially as a safety net program for them. What we're finding is even for wheels on wheels, our seniors, we are seniors that are not qualifying for the program and the town's involvement with the Jewish Family Service, which is also under the umbrella of the Orange County Office of the EJ, there are many municipalities that have bought into this and I can give you an example. They have Crawford, Bloomington Grove, Montgomery, Tannenberg, Wallkill, Warwick and Woodbury. And I did have a chance to chat just briefly with Town of Warwick Supervisor Michael Sweeten and that program is really growing in Warwick and they have found as a community, it's really helped them to also keep track of vulnerable people in the community and finding them resources that we need. And I think we learned one thing in this pandemic, that isolation is a big thing with our seniors, food insecurity. We had a wonderful worker, I'm not going to say worker, bus driver, but she was also an advocate for seniors, Valerie Cordero, she was their lifeline. I'm just concerned that we're not going to have that and I think it's time that the town gets involved and works with this county program to provide services to our seniors. So I don't want, I'll talk about the, there were levels of involvement. The initial one was five thousand dollars where that's a yearly contract where the county would actually come in, they would be the coordinators, they would actually establish training programs for potential volunteers, they do all the background checks. One of the questions the supervisor, Randazzo, had brought up to me was about liability insurance. You know, the town would not be liable, that would be part of our agreement. Basically, they actually coordinate and provide additional trainings and then they'll actually handle all the background checks for volunteers and again communicating with the town. The five thousand dollar level is that this is provided on the county level. We could go different levels and I just sent, this was an update, there's an eight thousand dollar level, I feel like it's a PBS show, we get a certain level of, you know, prizes, but, no, it's eight thousand dollars. What it actually does, if you do this additional cost, we have three hours a week of dedicated staff and they would actually be just for Cornwall residents, they would actually be stationed at Mungar Cottage and they would actually do all the coordination, coordinating of the programs here in Cornwall for our volunteers. And they'll do a lot of local recruitment to get Cornwall and former Hudson residents to actually volunteer and also outreach for people in the community. And believe it, there are a lot of people that are hidden in this community that we don't know about and I'm finding that out very quickly. And then there is a ten thousand dollar level where we would have, I know, but again, this is, you know, one day. The municipal health and program coordinator will be here for five hours a week, again, doing the same services. And what I've done with the template of the agreement, I did provide this to our attorney and the supervisor. One of the things, our obligation is actually to develop and have a friendly visitor advisory board, so we work directly with Jewish Family Services and let them know how things are working, what needs we have. And then we'll meet actually with them regularly. Eventually, we would have to have a coordinator, but at the five thousand dollar level, we will have, they will be the coordinator for us. I think they really need to help us through this. And again, we'll get pamphlets and flyers that they'll actually provide for the, like this says the Town of Crawford, we'll have the Town of Cornwall, so these cards, rack cards will be out in the community and we can put them in different places. So families, I'm not just saying the seniors, but the families of seniors, this is their way to find help, you know, find some services and help for their parents because people are working and sometimes they need someone else to do the, you know, the chores, not the chores, but the shopping for them. Home assessments, I think are really important. I think just recently I ran into something where, you know, just helping someone, you found out that the problem, not the problem, but the problem was bigger. And I'm hoping the board, once we look at the contracts, we actually come in and support this program. I think that for five thousand dollars, if we could do a traffic study, we can invest in our seniors. So that's, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so another thing I have under the work session, I do want to say that fortunately, after a lot of effort from a lot of people at a lot of levels, FEMA has finally come through for the property owners in Orange County and obviously including Cornwall as of Friday. So I'm working with the Orange County Office of Management to see if we can get a processing center, which would be here for a few days, so that residents would be able to come hopefully to Mungar Cottage and be able to get FEMA assistance, filling out the paperwork and everything to get the process going for them. So should know within the next day or two whether we're going to be designated as one of the, one of the centers. So that concludes the work session. We do have a special meeting that we're going to go into, we have a couple of items, then we're going to go executive session. So let me just ask, is there any comment from the public? Yes, Scott?
Scott Terese, Twenty Two Cherry Avenue. I think it's important for the residents of Cornwall to understand that the preliminary budget that was presented back in October to the public is significantly different than the budget that was adopted in November. Can you speak to how is it that the public did not get to comment about the significant difference between the preliminary budget and the final budget? There was a one point three million dollar fund balance that was used to close the gap between revenue and expenses in the first budget and then there was a two point seven million dollar fund balance used to close a gap due to the reduced in revenue in the reported budget, the budget that was submitted. How come the public didn't get to see that budget?
Yeah, well, we followed the procedures, we had the public hearing. After a public hearing, the town board can make whatever adjustments it deems appropriate to the budget before it's adopted and that's exactly what the board did.
And so, and I would like some answers from the board about how you were able to take one point four million dollars from the fund balances and not take into consideration how the community might have wanted to spend that money. You know, Virginia just got done talking about programs for the seniors. We got one point four million dollars that wiped off the budget, right? That could have been used for something like that. We could have used some of that money for the issues on Continental. That wasn't considered by the board? Nobody considered that one point four million? What about the pool and the recreation center? What about parking issues on Main Street? None of those things were considered by this board for the one point four million that you just decided to use for the fund balance? I'd like some.
To give back to taxpayers.
That's right.
To give back to the taxpayers.
But why not bring that to the taxpayers? I'm a taxpayer.
You're going to get the benefit in January.
What, but there are more benefits.
Well, you can raise the questions in January for next year, but the board deemed that it would be more appropriate at this point in time, given the inflation everybody's facing, gasoline prices, high heating fuel and all, we determined that giving funding back to the taxpayers was the appropriate way to deal with that amount of surplus. So it's in there, they're going to get major tax reduction, their property taxes in January and going forward, we have the money, we have five thousand dollars to fund this, what Virginia proposed for the seniors, so we're not broke. There's still plenty of money in the surplus that will help the town.
How's that going to impact for that in each of the accounts?
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me, but yeah.
Well, how can you never have it in front of you? You never seem to have it when you ask a question.
Because that's not what's before us tonight, Josh.
And so, Scott, the answer to your question is, the proposed changes to the preliminary were made ninety seconds before we adopted the budget. There was no time for review. I abstained on those changes and then I voted no because it was fiscally irresponsible. You know, we're going to have to cut services in 2023 unless we raise taxes by two or three million dollars next year. So this fiscally irresponsible budget is his parting gift to the, you know, to the town and the taxpayers.
There was a four to one vote, Josh, it's not my gift to anyone.
Well, you know what?
It's going back in the pocket of taxpayers.
Did you review this, the changes before you voted on them? Or did you see them ninety seconds before I did?
If you want to, we put it back in the pocket of taxpayers. If you want to take it out of the pocket of the taxpayers for 2023, that's your prerogative, that'll be your choice in 2022.
You know what, the taxpayers never had a say because you, even though what you did was legal, it was highly fiscally irresponsible, unethical and not transparent, like everything you do as always.
Like you're always transparent and you're always.
And you're ethical.
Yeah, you're ethical, you're honest, you don't tell tales. Anyone else? Doug?
And you're, kind of these things separate, but slightly different question. And this is really directed to Mr. Guinness and Ms. Scott, because, well, Ms. Scott wasn't at the public hearing, but Mr. Guinness, I specifically talked to you about the controller's report where they specifically talked about being prudent with the fund balances and having a longer term plan. And I'm just wondering whether or not, when you made this one point four million dollar kind of change after the public hearing, depleting the town's fund balances, whether that was part of the required long-term plan that the controller tells the town lead they should do. Specifically, and again, this is getting into the numbers a little bit, looking at it, the seven point seven million dollar tax levy that you're proposing for this year, that you approved for this year, going forward would require about a thirty percent cut in town services, if that's the tax levy that you now think is appropriate for this town. And I'm just wondering whether that long-term implications, not just, I understand this puts money back into the pockets this year, but I think at least you should make sure that the taxpayers understand that either next year you're going to be cutting services by thirty percent to maintain that tax level, tax levy that you've now approved, or you're going to need to have essentially a massive tax hike begin next year. So again, I'm just, I guess I'm asking whether you actually did any long-term planning or whether this was, and you actually did the analysis after the public hearing where the initial budget was presented.
You made sure the services are covered.
Exactly.
Well, but they're covered out of savings, they're not covered out of taxes.
So you can raise the taxes next year, Doug, when you do the budget.
Well, that's right, okay, so you're admitting that this is going to be.
If that's what you're going to do, if you can't find any other way to balance the budget, you'll have to do what you have to. That's up to you.
Okay, that's exactly right, Mr. Guinness.
Yeah, so in 2022, when you're doing the 2023 budget, you can do whatever you want with it.
Exactly.
You can raise taxes, you can cut services, whatever you want to do.
Okay.
Right now, the taxpayer is going to see a reduction at a timing, at a timely time.
Service cuts in the long year.
There's money in there for the program.
Money in for the plus or is surplus?
We'll be still seeing when we have a public hearing in January.
There's still surplus.
Go over this in town.
There's still surplus.
Yeah.
So.
Please give us those numbers. Oh, actually, Renata, can I submit a statement for the record on this subject?
Sure, you can get whatever numbers you want, Josh. Okay, we're going to move into the special meeting, yes, sir.
I'd like to bring down a second for the Mailer Avenue speaking. I appreciate Mr. DeAndrea coming tonight. A couple of things from the board's consideration is that the eighty-fifth percentile has been the gold standard for years, but it is not the only way to set a speed on a road. By that logic, Mailer's speech should actually be raised to thirty-five knots per hour, right? The New York State Federal Highway, sorry, the Federal Highway Safety Administration allows other considerations to be brought into the report. And I haven't had a chance to see the report, so I'll request that by foil this week, but a couple of things like the easements of the houses against the road and the number of driveways and access points on the road do give reason to consider the fiftieth percentile in certain situations. So I don't want to dismiss that there is still potential to pursue with the, with the regional, New York State dot, which could actually be the cheapest way forward first while we're considering other options. Thank you.
Yes, okay, yes, Eileen? Eileen, excuse me, Eileen had her hand up. Eileen, excuse me, Eileen had her hand up.
I I can get up to to those accounting too, so I won't, but, you know, my other business is that I suppose spending for ninety budgets all the time. And one thing, and also my co-op goes through the same thing here, do we raise our maintenance, do we not raise our maintenance? And the bottom line is, paying a life bill with your savings account is always a bad thing. And I understand what everyone's saying, put money back in the taxpayers' pocket this year, but next year's gonna be a bad year, too. So you're gonna raise taxes, you're gonna inevitably, unless of course you you um, you cut services, you're gonna have to raise taxes, in which case during a difficult time. It's easier for people to adjust to their operating expenses and know what they're gonna be spending than to go back and forth and take money out. But also, if there's another bad storm, like I just had, that washed things out or this or that, if you keep taking money out of the reserve.
There is money in reserve.
Nothing to go.
There's still money in reserve to cover that.
Fine, but we also, in the audit process, got slapped by the Napoli's office in the past for using reserve accounts to balance our budget, it's it's.
Everybody uses reserves to balance the budget. Everybody does it.
Yeah, I understand everybody does, but you know what? From an economic standpoint and and businesses, it's not good policy.
So then maybe that'll be a policy next year, that they won't use it.
So but that's just it, in the end, it comes back and you're still gonna have to make it up, and then you.
Well, maybe next go around, they they won't use the reserve money, they'll just do the taxes.
Right, but you but you take it, you put it back in the pockets this year, but you're gonna take it out next year.
Well, at least they'll hold, they'll hold on to it for a year, maybe they have some good use that they can, you know, put the money.
I do. Uh, question on the workers' comp, were there any other quotes submitted?
No, actually, there weren't, because we we've been, actually, this is much lower than what we've been paying in the past, Randy, so we've been, worked with the company now for a few years, we have a good relationship with them, they've handled our claims, and so it's it's a very reasonable amount that we've had.
So there wasn't any new charity responsibility, just those quotes?
We've done it, we've done it in the past and, you know, worked with the comp alliances, you know, has quoted, given us.
And I'll just close with the budget, this happened back in two thousand and eight when you left retired, and it left the Quigley administration behind the eight wall for three years, um, with a significant cut in the reserves, then we had to, who has an eight economic fiasco, and then we had the two percent tax cap put in by the state. So using the reserves early is not long term financial planning.
And if I recall, every one of those years, they paid their bills and there were no issues with that.
Oh, there were issues?
Sir, yes.
Mr. Nadel, Mike Gilson, Seventeen Hudson Road, it's more of a dress speeding down Royal Avenue. Thank you for doing the study, it's there, it's not inclusive yet. I know that it adhered to the, the study on it. Question I have is, is the engineer gonna be here next week to answer some of our questions?
No, I, he came tonight.
He came in and went out the door.
To the board.
But when's he gonna be able to answer?
We can see if if we can go back or fill really who.
Or does he want us to write us some R F Is given to you, so you can issue them to him, so we can get it back in writing?
If you have questions at all, we could certainly pass them on to him, even over the next few days. If you come up with questions, email them to me, I'll get them to the engineer.
We do have questions. Um, and just to go to the speeding on the road, if you look at the report issued here by the Cornwall Police Department, okay, it says there was one speeding going down the road, but the accidents on the road, let's go back to those, everybody was backing out of the driveway, two out of the three accidents. It just goes to show you whether the resident backed out and didn't see the vehicle coming, or the vehicle didn't see the the resident backing out, the accident occurred backing out onto that road. There's definitely a problem. And I know that you guys are gonna look into it, you know, look at the the speed bumps or the tables, if you want to see what these speed tables they have, if you go up to Meadow Hill in front of the elementary school in the Tannenburg, they have them there. At one point in time, they were, the tables were there and they were marked similar to what a crosswalk would be marked like, and you would see them. They have repaved through there, they're still there, you cannot see them now. So when you get there, it's a surprise. Definitely wrong. Something that simple would definitely slow down the speed. And uh, the other thing I wanna address the board to was, take the engineer's report and everything that it gave us that's valid, think about it, and why not submit the paperwork to the D O T, to the state, wherever it's gotta go, and ask for a reduction? And if we do not get anything, then we go through one of the three or four measures. Because does it cost us anything to put paperwork forward, or just your time?
No, I I think that you're talking about like the linear.
Yeah, send send report forward to ask for a reduction, if we don't get it, then use one of the four methods that the engineer came up with to reduce the speed if we can.
Yeah, I I mean, that certainly, if the engineer can use the data that he's collected, he may have to do some additional work to cover that linear.
Right.
Uh, consideration that they would have, but that's something we could certainly ask the engineer.
Yeah, at least put the paper forward, if you get denied further up, then we go back to the four things that he said.
Because these these are the things in here, some of them, they're gonna require input from the residents.
Yeah, I agree.
Couple of those things to really do.
I agree.
So that you understand what the the downside of it might be for the residents who live there.
Sure, I can see some of the good and the bad in them, but yeah, definitely, let's keep going forward and just.
But if you have any questions, write them up, email them to me, and I'll definitely get them to the engineer ASAP. Yes.
I just have one quick question.
Sure.
So I didn't hear very well from what he was talking about, I keep telling him I need that hearing aid, um, but did he have any cost in there about, you know, the the flashing sign?
Speed on time.
Yeah, well, no, there's another sign I thought that it would flash that.
Are you talking about the yellow caution flashing signs?
Yeah, that says you're speeding.
He said, oh, he did mention those two L E D ones he talked about as a possibility.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Hi, this is the Larkin, Cornwall Hudson. I didn't hear, maybe you had said it, what is the actual fund balance at present?
Yeah, we can, we can provide that information.
Oh, no one has that?
No, the projected one, we can provide the projected balance for for the end of the year. We're not gonna know that until the year closes out exactly what it is, but we have a projected fund balance.
What is the projected fund balance?
I don't have that in front of me, but we can do the.
In the public hearing, we have four of two, and you didn't have.
We can provide that. No, Doug, what I said, Doug, is it wasn't in the budget document, and I didn't have that in front of me. So we can certainly provide that.
Oh, I'm sorry, a follow up to that then, will it be in front of you or the board next week at your work, uh, this is the work session.
Yeah, I mean, we'll put the number together and put it out there, that's not a problem.
Oh, great, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, call a special meeting to order, the first item we have is Village and Firtha Fights Water District re-levee. Whereas the town board has been presented with a list of unpaid water charges in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-eight dollars and fifty-three cents. One owed by properties outside of the village of Cornwall Hudson receiving water from the Village of Cornwall Hudson, and two owed by properties in the Firtha Fights Water District. Whereas the Village of Cornwall Hudson has requested that the town board adopt a resolution forwarding the list of property owners together with the unpaid charges to this county of Orange requesting that same re-levee on the twenty twenty-two general tax bill as authorized by the Town of Cornwall Code one fifty dash eight, a copy of which is attached here, too. It being understood that when the Town of Cornwall receives the taxes, including the unpaid water charges that the town will then remit, the unpaid water charges to the appropriate entity, now therefore be resolved as follows, that due, after due consideration of the above requests, the town board does hereby adopt this resolution agreeing to forward the list of unpaid water charges listed by property owner to the county of Orange, together with the request that the fore-said unpaid water charge in the amount of one hundred ninety-nine thousand, four hundred eighty-eight thousand, fifty-three cents be re-levee against the list of properties that the same appear on the twenty twenty-two general tax bill. Is there a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second? Discussion, roll call?
Ms. Bund, yes. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes.
Ms. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Next is a resolution on the recently acquired Triangle property, uh, that's gonna be developed into a park. Whereas the town board has previously authorized the purchase of a small triangular portion of the premises known as Thirty-Six Broadway, S B L twenty-four dash one dash two, on Cornwall Broadway LLC. Whereas on September twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, the Cornwall Broadway LLC did at the triangle parcel to the town. Whereas the town has previously considered the acquisition of this parcel for conversion and use as a public park, they are therefore be resolved as follows. One, the town board hereby approves the conversion of the above described parcel of land for use by the town and citizens as a public park. And two, the town board determines that the conversion of the parcel is a type two action under SECPRA. And three, the town board authorizes supervisor's sign all documents necessary to effectuate the conversion. Is there a motion on the resolution?
So moved.
Is there a second, discussion, roll call?
Ms. Bund, yes. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes.
Ms. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. I'd like to hand a motion to go into the executive session for personnel matter pertaining to sanitation department. Is there a second, discussion, roll call?
Ms. Bund, yes. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Mr. Wojcicki?
Yes.
Ms. Randazzo?
Yes, motion is carried. Thank you all very much for coming.